The time is tomorrow one, and I'd like to call this regular special Lebanon Board of Education meeting. We could all please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming today. We're going to start off with some recognition afternoon.
Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Happy Valentine's Day to the audience out there. So we've been making an effort over the last several board meetings to recognize our students, in particular with how they are demonstrating leadership in the district and amplifying their voice as best we can. So today, I'm pleased to celebrate some of our younger learners from the elementary school who attended the Connecticut Association of School Leadership Conference. And the conference was focused on providing young students an opportunity to develop skills needed to be effective leaders. The students from the elementary school were chosen both on observations of the school-wide positive behavior expectations and performance on their third-grade Smarter Balance assessments and fourth-grade Eye Ready assessments. I'm going to call your name if you could stand up so that everybody can give you a nice round of applause. And then I'm going to pass your certificates to Mrs. QG, who will take a picture of you in the hallway. So first, Lilly Huntington. Monty Raymer, not here right now. Reagan Merritt. Mia Bundy. Charlotte Rogers. And Ethan Wanglaskey. Congratulations, learners.
Congratulations. And Mrs. QG will take your picture. Right, Mrs. QG, out in the atrium?
And this evening, or this late afternoon, meeting was specially scheduled so that you can be home with your family, enjoying a dinner afterwards. So thank you again for coming.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day.
All right, we will move along to our communication. We do have some letters of retirement to share.
Yeah, so these are always bittersweet, and I've had a request to come through to read each and every word of these letters because they are so thoughtful and meaningful to these educators who have dedicated many years of service to the Lebanon Public Schools. So I'm proud to uphold that request. And actually, I'm going to share the wealth with Sarah, our board chair, so that she can participate in this as well. So the first one I have the pleasure of acknowledging is Barbara Lazier, who is serving as a reading interventionist at the elementary school. She writes, Dear Mr. Gonzalez, it's with excitement and immense sadness that I plan to retire at the close of the 22-23 school year. I've enjoyed working as an elementary teacher for the past 45 years. I served 44 of these years in Lebanon as a classroom teacher in grades two through six before becoming a reading interventionist. During my time here, I've loved working with countless amounts of students, their parents, and my colleagues, providing not only academics, but also offering guidance, support, and lasting friendships. She thanks Mr. Gonzalez, Mrs. Scorso, and all of the former superintendents and principals for the support that she has received over the past 44 years as an elementary teacher in the Lebanon school system. She says, I will always think back fondly on my time as an educator. Barbara, thank you for all you have done.
The next letter is from Christine Burrell. She writes, Dear Superintendent Gonzalez and Lebanon Board of Education members, I would like to officially announce my early retirement as of June 30, 2023. I've worked in Lebanon for 37 years, taught over 1,000 students, and worked with nine superintendents and nine principals. I've even worked with previous students and taught children of previous students. During these years, I've seen many reading, math, and writing programs shift teaching perspectives. But what remains consistent is the dedication and commitment that my fellow colleagues have to helping children become more successful learners, especially in these last three years, where not only academic improvement was crucial, but also social and emotional development. We must not only think of students, but also of faculty emotional support as the learning environment in schools have become more challenging for all. I hope that the Board of Education remains steadfast in their support of both students and staff with this endeavor. In closing, it has been a fun and at times arduous journey, but one which has given me much joy. I have laughed, played, and even cried with my students. The children have given me much love and many memories which I will cherish. I have truly enjoyed working with the many staff members throughout the years and will miss my school family, but I am looking forward to starting my new adventure. Thank you for the opportunity to teach in the Lebanon community. Respectfully, Christine Burrell. Thank you, Christine.
This next staff member is here today, and I think she grew up with Christine in Stonington, if I'm not mistaken, before joining us here in Lebanon. I am humbled to be able to read her letter of retirement today. Dear Superintendent Gonzalez and members of the Board of Education, the time has come for me to retire. As I reflect on my 36-year career in education, the entirety of which has been dedicated to teaching fourth grade at Lebanon Elementary School, the changes in the education I have experienced have been immense. Since I was nicknamed "Dada Queen" years ago, I will use numbers to culminate my career. During my time in the Lebanon School District, there have been nine superintendents at the helm and nine principals at LES. Approximately 800 students have been in my fourth grade class, and I have taught with a total of 18 other fourth grade teachers at LES. When I began teaching in 1987, we relied on handwritten copies and ditto machines, which ruined many of my suits. My first experience with the computer took place in a portable classroom with a Commodore computer that used floppy disks of Magic Slate, Math Blaster, and where in the world is Carmen Sandiego? Great game. Now we have incorporated the use of personal devices into our everyday instruction. I shepherded my students through the sudden move to online instruction caused by the pandemic and continue to support them as we learn to live with this new reality. Throughout these changes, one thing has been constant: my love for my students and for the teaching profession. Having lived in Lebanon for 35 of those years and having raised my three sons here, the Lebanon community is at the core of both my professional and personal life. Throughout these years, I have been a strong advocate for the education system in Lebanon and all the children of Lebanon, speaking passionately on numerous occasions at a myriad of town meetings. While I will certainly miss my daily interactions with the children, I welcome the opportunity retirement will afford me to explore other facets of the community and life. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to practice my craft as an educator in a town I hold dear. Sincerely, Kathleen Smith. Thank you, Kathleen.
The next letter is from Sheri Wilson. Dear Mr. Gonzalez, I am writing to inform you that I am retiring from the position of Special Education Teacher at Lebanon Middle School effective June 30, 2023. I am retiring due to the early retirement incentive plan that was offered to the Lebanon Public School teachers. The past 21 years at Lebanon Middle School hold some of my best memories as a teacher. Being part of the eighth grade team for 16 years, the many trips to Washington, D.C., dances, Top Cat assemblies, teacher torture, and late-night fundraiser pickups, just to name a few. I then moved to the sixth grade and then into the scales room to round out my career. I have fond memories of the times when I was a coach here at the middle school for girls' basketball, boys' soccer, and track and field. I also worked at the high school doing contest management for many years, which was a nice way to see all the students who had come through the middle school to see how they were thriving at the high school level. Last but not least are the staff I have enjoyed with, I have worked with over my career. They have all been wonderful, knowledgeable, and passionate about the profession, as well as dedicated to helping each child reach their full potential as they enter the fifth, as they enter as fifth graders and leave at the end of the eighth grade. There is some sadness involved, as teaching has been the only thing I have done for the past 27 years, but there is excitement as well, to be able to spend time with my family and explore the next chapter of my life. I have cherished every moment here, both good and bad, but am ready to move on. Thanks again for the opportunity to teach and coach the youth of Lebanon. Sincerely, Sheri Wilson.
The next letter is from Cynthia Hinsman. Dear Superintendent Gonzalez and members of the Lebanon Board of Education, this letter is to inform you of my decision to retire at the end of the 22-23 school year. Choosing to retire from my social studies teaching position at Lyman was a very difficult decision to make. I have taught in a variety of school settings in five different states and have never found a more welcoming school or better students than I have had the pleasure of teaching at Lyman. In addition, I have very much enjoyed advising the student council, Model United Nations Club, and the Ski Club for a number of years during my tenure. These positions have given me the opportunity to make connections with students in settings beyond the classroom. It has also been a pleasure to see some of my students go on to major in history in college and some of them even to become social studies teachers. For these reasons and so many more, it is not easy to retire from a job that I love doing, but I'm ready to explore the new possibilities that lie ahead after 42 years of teaching. Thank you for your generous verip offer and for your support of me as an educator in the Lebanon School District over the past 22 years. Sincerely, Cynthia Hinsman. So our teachers that are retiring will also be acknowledged and celebrated at the end of the school year. So we'll have something special for them, but thank you for your letters and most importantly, thank you for your dedicated service. The last communication that we have is from Karen Mitchell, who serves on our custodial team at the high school. As of March 17, 2023, she will be retiring from her custodian position. We wish Karen all the best.
At this time, we are going to allow public participation. According to the Lebanon Board of Education bylaws, we will allocate up to 30 minutes for public participation, with each individual speaker allocated two minutes. At this point, at this time, are there any members of the public who wish to speak this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will move on.
Actually, I'll try this.
Okay.
Can you grab a chair, please?
Of course.
I don't need a chair.
You've got to just turn to my, uh, question.
Do me a favor, can you say your name and your address?
Yep, Mark Makovich, 784 Beaumont Highway, Lebanon, Connecticut. It's weird that the public speaking is now before the budget thing, but I'll address the budget. So I'm in the Navy, moved here in '07 before I had kids and because of the farming community. Since then, we've had two kids, Michael and George, both autistic and one autistic and ADHD, which is when I first met Andy in a different position many years ago. What the school district has done for my kids, and I, when I talk to my military family, is unbelievable. It is why I've given up the majority chance of taking command of my own submarine to remain here in Lebanon, to make sure that my kids can continue and grow. As I've looked at the budget over the last few years and became important in my life, I will say that how you guys have handled the money given has been phenomenal. However, it's always been under budget, and at some point, we need to push the town to fully fund. Because one thing I've learned of my 22 years in the Navy is that the wants of, the needs of tomorrow are the wants of today. And when they become, go from wants to needs, they become significantly more expensive. So I like, you know, I've liked your work that you've done, Superintendent, on the budget and how you've been able to work around and figure out what we can fit in with what the towns ask. But at some point, I think that it is going to be time for us to push hard to get at least one year of a fully funded budget so that we can continue to progress and educate our kids far into the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to our consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second motion by John, seconded by Nicole. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, and that passes unanimously. Moving on to our student representatives report. Hello, Lexi, how are you?
I'm well, how are you all?
Good.
All right, I've got quite a bit. It's been a fun month. All right, here at Lyman, we've had so much going on. Recently, we had the American Legion Oratorical Competition, which is a public speaking contest about the importance of our U.S. Constitution. And we had five participants. Kendall Bro won our school and progressed on to regionals, which she also placed first at, and she will be headed to states in March. The Liman Wyndham Tech Co-op Wrestling went to ECCs over the weekend. We placed sixth overall and first in our division, making us the Division III champion for the ECC. Cameron Samarka won for his weight class and is the ECC tournament champion. Seven of our wrestlers placed in the top five for their weight classes, and they are headed to Milford this Friday and Saturday for Class M states. Indoor track had a monumental season. The boys' track, indoor track team placed seventh overall at ECCs with Jeremiah Bobby, Nicholas Afriana, Kyle Franchi, and Anthony Williams, all placing top five in their respective events. Girls' indoor track placed fourth overall, and Leah Kamarowski placed first in the 55-meter dash, and she broke a lot of records. I don't know how many, but she broke quite a bit. We had a pep rally on Friday, February 3, where students and staff participated in school spirit-building games like hula-hooping and free throw shooting contests. And also that Friday, we had a Valentine's Day dance. Over 130 students bought tickets, too. The girls' basketball team had their senior night last night in their last game of the regular season. They will be headed into the postseason with their next game quarterfinals on Thursday, and they won the Division IV championship. The juniors have NGSS testing, a science test, tomorrow. There was an FFA vendor fair held by parent alumni for FFA on Saturday, last Saturday. Boys' basketball has their senior night tonight, and it's their last home game as well. JV starts at 5:30, and Varsity starts at 7 o'clock. Also for the boys' basketball team, Jaden Lopez scored his 1,000th point. The musical is going well, and they've switched to every day after school until 6 o'clock and added Saturday rehearsals recently, so it's crunch time. And Caroline Nettleton participated in Eastern Region for singing and also got, recently has been accepted into Allstate, where she'll represent Lyman. At the middle school, the winter sports, girls' basketball, boys' basketball, and wrestling have ended. The Lyman Boys Basketball Team went to support the LMS Boys Basketball Team at one of their games, and the boys', LMS Boys Basketball, went up to a Lyman game as well. So we're seeing like the school collaboration. Volleyball will be starting soon. Signups have already taken place, and they'll have their first practice on the 22nd. National Junior Honor Society sold and delivered Valentine's Day grams today. Drama Club has begun rehearsals for their upcoming performance on May 6, which will be an extension off of last year's play. There's a book fair this week run by the PTO. Members of student council, NGHS, and peer educators recently met with Mr. Gonzalez. And there will be a Panther Den next Friday, where the PTO will be collaborating with the Lebanon, the Lions Club and the Lebanon Leos. At the elementary school, they had a book fair last week. They enjoyed Valentine's Day parties today. They had a Candyland dance last Saturday, which I wish the high school had themes like that. I would enjoy a Candyland-themed dance. And they have a PBIS assembly on Friday, which is also tie-dye day, a spirit week they earned through positive behavior. And the Invention Convention is tomorrow. And then for all of the schools, there is an event being held here at Lyman on March 2, the Evening with the Arts, where artwork will be showcased, and there will be events in the music and theater departments. Like a contemporary ensemble will be performing, the band and chorus will be performing, and the Mamma Mia will have a preview. So, yeah, a lot going on, I know.
Lexi, when is, when is Mamma Mia again?
Mamma Mia is March 9, 10, and 11, or 10th, 11th, and 12. The 10th and 11th, it is at 7:00 p.m., and the 12th, it is at 2:00 p.m.
Thank you.
Yes.
Wow, thank you for that. That was a lot. You were nice.
Oh, and I baked you all cookies. I forgot them in my car. I can go and get them now. I can go and get them. I figured since I was spending Valentine's Day with you guys.
And before you, before you rush out, I know you would not give yourself credit within your report, but Lexi did participate in oratorical.
Oh, yeah.
And she did a great job up there. That, I have to admit, when I was in the audience, I, I know for a fact, as a high school student, I couldn't have done that. And I don't even know many adults that feel comfortable to do that now. I'll be detailing a little bit more of it in my superintendent update, but it was impressive, and congratulations on your job.
Thank you. Fantastic.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we will move on to our reports of our committees. Let's start with Brian, finance.
Guess I took a drink at the right time, huh?
I'm sorry about that.
So we've got two of them, huh?
Yes.
So I guess I'll start with Januaries. That was January 10, 6:45. We did it after the facilities subcommittee meeting. Talked at that point a lot more about the 24 budget. That's when we asked to try to get the list a little bit clearer for us, maybe get some of those things that had dropped off the list over the last several years back on. We got a look at, you know, facilities. Once we started adding that stuff, the capital list went up considerably when we brought some of those old things back on the list. One of the things that was asked and did happen for the, for our February's meeting was that Superintendent Gonzalez went through the list with all the functional leaders of facilities and IT and all that stuff to, to reprioritize the list. So I'll cover that more when we get into February's. Mr. Gonzalez updated us on the FY24 operating budget. At that particular point in time, we were looking at 3.7% increase as our bottom at that point, five educators had expressed an interest in the program to, for early retirement. The fuel prices, we had asked about fuel prices, and Valerie had let us know that the fuel prices were already locked in for FY24, which is a good thing. We were on track budget-wise. Rubbish went up considerably. So that is an area that I know for, even for consumers, has been a, the area of concern has almost doubled, so for homeowners. And then I had brought up a long-term planning study thought that was brought to me, and we eventually brought to the board meeting, and more about that, I want to guess, I cover February's.
There you go.
Okay, moving on.
Moving on.
Moving on. So we met last week, and while the packet is a bit beefy, there was, there was budget stuff that I wanted to make sure that was added in there. The capital list was updated extensively, and they, when it was redone, the costs were proposed out through FY27 and '28. All the Priority One items that you'll see on the list were reoccurring, and they felt, you know, are needed for each fiscal year, so they would actually stay on. The priorities were marked two through five, had either safety or security concerns. Item number six was the HVAC unit for the middle school, right?
Yes.
Yes, middle school art room. Not only does the HVAC need replaced, but I guess it's caused damage to the ceiling, too. So the cost that's in there includes a repair vote. There was a lot of discussion in the, in the subcommittee about what we asked the Board of Finance for. We've received basically, you know, $100,000 over the past several years for facilities. And certainly, while we appreciate everything that we've gotten, a lot of things have fallen off that list. And we were, so we went back and forth. There was, like I said, considerable discussion on it. But at the end, the committee thought that we should ask for what we need in order to get caught up. And, which was about, well, which was about $358,000. $458,000 if we include a, up to another $100,000 for a long-term planning study, which I'll get to shortly. Technology, Jacques, I updated his list. We need to, again, in the technology section, add more money next year in order to get caught up. We approved $213,000 to bring forward as a request for the technologies capital. And just as an example, we've got 64 smart boards that are in desperate need of replacement. And one of the concerns that I had was replacing that amount at one time only leads us to having to replace 64 smart boards again at the same time. But it was felt that with a reoccurring budget amount that the smart boards could be budgeted out and started to be replaced starting it, you know, when they start failing it, and so we, they'd spread that 64 out over several years. Athletics, the biggest priority there was a track replacement. And athletics historically has only gotten about $30,000. So the subcommittee voted unanimously to ask for $310,000 for the athletics capital budget for this next fiscal year. Valerie was going to update us tonight on the '23 budget, but at the time, there was nothing popping. Mr. Gonzalez brought forward the, some changes to the '24 budget. With, it went, basically, the bottom line was it went from about 3.7%, where we projected up to 4.61 based on some changes, you know, utilities and some other negotiations. There, Mr. Gonzalez also brought forward seven other districts and what they were looking at for budgets so far for next year, and averaged out there about 5.28% as far as an increase that they were looking at. The 4.61 number, in the subcommittee's opinion, just like the 3.7% number before that, really is our bottom line. And there was, you know, again, continued discussion on, do we just keep asking for the bare minimum in order to try to get it through? So there's, there's several proposals, you know, that the subcommittee thought was important to bring forward to all of you, to the board tonight. And so that's what we will be doing, including several things that we feel should be purchased under non-lapsing funds. And you want me to read those off, or we're going to do that later?
We have separate action items for all of them, so we'll talk, we'll speak to them.
We'll talk about that later.
Yeah, at that time.
Yeah, so we voted on all the things that we're going to bring forward. The subcommittee voted unanimously to bring those forward to the board to use non-lapsing funds to, to take care of. And if they are approved, or if some are approved tonight by the board, they will, and they're on the capital list. they're on the capital list, certainly we'll remove them from the capital list and update that before the, the next meeting.
Study?
The study? Yes, thank you. Keeping me honest, Nicole. The long-term planning study. So, Sarah, Mr. Gonzalez, and I met with the Board of Selectmen last week now, right? And had a discussion with them. There was considerable discussion with the Board of Selectmen on, I guess, why them, or why, why were we there versus the Board of Finance? It was our take, and I'll say our from the Board of Education side, that, to the Board of Selectmen, that'd be irresponsible on our part to not come to them and advise them as part of, you are awesome.
Only made nine. I don't know. I'm so sorry. I counted wrong or something.
I'll, I'll give up mine, because I've been eating too many, too many cookies lately, and birthday cake and things like that.
And birthday cake?
And birthday cake.
I counted and they were negative, guys, so I don't know where I went.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does really anything else matter now that we have to? So, the long-term study. So, we went, kind of took the selectmen through it. It, you know, it'd be foolish on our part to not bring them up to speed. We wanted, you know, them, I, I guess, look for buy-in or their take on it, so to speak. Several of the Board of Selectmen were in favor of us doing something, you know, that something should be done, certainly because of the, you know, we presented, a lot of our physical plants and our facilities are in need of some serious dollars, some serious work. And, you know, whether we start bonding for some of these stuff, some of the stuff now, or, you know, to have a comprehensive study for us to, for everyone in town to be able to say, okay, here's the facts, not just speculation. So, there was a little, I would say, pushback because of they, their willing or want to get the town garage built and, and pushed through. But again, some on the Board of Selectmen said that we shouldn't have to hit one or the other, we should be able to do both. So, our next stop will be Board of Finance coming up this month.
Go ahead, Andy.
I will have in the Friday update to you all, we did get an update from the company that had given us like the rough figure of what that would cost with kind of a breakdown of their projection per task of what it would be like on the top end in terms of cost. Obviously, we would have to go out to bid for something like this, but that was something that the Board of Selectmen had said would be good for us to have more of an exact figure or at least something better than just a round total. So, the gentleman was able to kind of break down the task for us.
That was a lot. Any questions for Brian?
Did he give you a number for the?
Yeah, so the total was the same, but the tasks were broken out, so that if anybody said, why $100,000, it had each of the events as part of the comprehensive study earmarked.
Yeah, I could ask a lot of questions, but one particular one I noticed, is it track replacement or resurfacing?
Resurface.
I believe it's resurfacing.
But I, so I, based on what I had before on our notes, I had, I think I wrote replacement, is that what I did, Danielle? But I thought, to be honest with you, it could go either way.
No, I, I thought it was every, like, 10 years it has to be resurfaced.
It just depends on what material you use.
Right, that, oh, that's what it was.
Yep.
Yep, dependent upon material.
But he also coupled it with the area that floods all of the time and trying to figure out why the water is pulling there.
Right, and what best to use to mitigate that.
Any other questions? And we'll continue the conversation, obviously, post Mr. Gonzalez's presentations. Okay, Nicole, facilities.
Okay, facilities met on February 7th. The first item on the agenda was a scissor lift, which is coming from Sunbelt. They were a bit backed up. It is being worked on. Hopefully, delivery should have been today, or around today. Next on the agenda was the LMS scoreboard. It has been ordered and awaiting delivery, and we did go with the more expensive model. Next was the LMS asbestos project. The company is Barton, I believe it is, is the engineering company. They are drafting their documents. They are going to have them no later than February 16th, and then they would like to do an onsite visit. Next was the LMS greenhouse. The question that came up was, is it functional? And we confirmed through Kevin that the greenhouse is functional, and now it is in the hands of teachers or whoever would like to use it. Next was the LES gymnasium floor. There's some steps that have to be done. The first is cutting holes in the floor to see where the moisture is coming in from. And then the next would be an excavation on the outside and on the south side and the east side walls. And then finally, removing just two solar panels to see if the moisture is coming from there. So, definitely some work has to be done to figure out where the moisture is coming from. And the floor was put in in 1980. Next was a snow removal contract. The three contracts are up, which is the snow removal, turf, and boilers. They will be reviewed on February 27th, and then we will be soliciting people to, you know, fill those contracts. Next was the facilities tracking list projects. They are all in progress. And then finally was the reviewing of the priority order that Brian talked about of the facilities capital requests. And the only thing that we asked Andy to do was put all the town bond projects on the back, meaning LES upgrade, the windows, the Lyman roof, and anything else that we, our big ticket items, so that way they can always be on our radar and Board of Finance can be aware of what we need to fix for our buildings. The next item on our agenda will be the tennis courts. The cracks have elongated, so we'll have to figure out what we have to do about that.
Go ahead, Andy.
Just a quick update, the scissor lift did not come yet, and the reason for going with the more expensive scoreboard is because it will allow us to better keep track at wrestling meets and potential volleyball events. We were originally only going to go with the score, but the scoreboard that has a higher price tag had more functions and would be able to meet the needs of all of our teams.
Any other questions for facilities? Okay, thanks for that. And enrollment, Nicole? I think you had them.
We did not meet this month because of the special meeting today, so we will be meeting in March.
Okay, great. Thank you. Maureen, policy?
Policy met in January and February, and we have lots of policies for first readings, and some are up for deletion. We had many that were getting old, you know? We'd been working on the whole manual, and we're getting down hopefully to the, the last big section. So, you have all those in your packet, and we had just have a several tonight for first re, for second readings. Hopefully, those will pass and we will be able to move on. Thank you.
Any questions for policy? Okay, Alexis, negotiations?
Negotiations continue. We had a very productive meeting yesterday with our parent educators, and we meet tomorrow with our secretaries.
John, Superintendent Nivell?
Since we last spoke, the mid-year evaluation process is complete, and so I won't be bothering you until April.
Okay. Danielle, curriculum?
We did not meet as a committee this past month, but we do have some policies that we will be discussing with the, curriculum will be meeting with the policy committee to discuss those specific ones, to help them out a little in their long process.
Get rid of them all in five years.
Danielle, any updates on where we are as far as the reading legislation? Have you discussed that?
Um, not as a committee, but I know there are some updates, and I believe there's discussion about it coming soon.
Okay, great. And Dawn, safety and security?
We did not meet.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, moving along to our administrators' report. Anybody wish to add to their reports?
I mean, I think Lexi did a good job. She did. So, I just wanted to make the board aware, the high school teachers have begun meeting about our class of 2026 and their transition to Lyman, and really looking at some of the data surrounding their struggles and challenges and their successes. So, we met a couple weeks ago, and we looked at academics, we looked at behavior, we looked at social emotional pieces with the DESA and things like that. And we discussed how to better transition our learners from not only Lebanon Middle School, but also our sending districts. And we came up with some plans and, to meet with the ninth grade as a whole, and then ironically enough, if any of you know Mr. Narita and how insightful of a person he is, I met with him after that meeting for his mid-year, and he said, you know what, Sam, why don't you meet with the ninth graders, a few of them, and see what they think about our plan? Maybe they think this is not going to work. And I was like, you know what? That's a great idea, Kio. So, I met with a group of nine ninth graders today from all different class levels, all different friend groups, different activities, athletes, clubs, different towns, and had an extremely insightful and meaningful conversation with them. And I kind of outlined what we were thinking, and they shared with me their thoughts on it, and they had some excellent feedback, and I'm going to meet with them again on the 27th. I was going to meet with them next week, but we have a lot of stuff going on during pause. With a clearer agenda, today was just to kind of see if they would even be willing to be a part of this, but they had such great things to share, including the ones from sending districts, and so I'm very, I'm very excited. I sent an email today how excited I was, but I'm hoping that as a team with the teachers and the students alike, we can become more cohesive and consistent so that we can support them in their successes and in the challenges that they have when they transition from middle school to high school. So, it was a really productive, good meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you, Sam.
It was awesome. Yeah, I'm, I'm really proud of our district and how we've followed through on something that we set out and wanted to do, you know, kind of mid-year. Wasn't really something that was on our radar. We caught wind of students really wanting to be involved in their experiences, wanting to have a voice, wanting to be leaders, and, you know, this is just another example. I feel like I could name half a dozen times in the past couple months that we've met with groups of learners and really looped them into the conversation, made them feel a part of the decision-making process, and I really think that, you know, we're going to continue these efforts, and it's going to be great for our district.
Any other administrators who would want to add to their report?
I am so sorry that I missed my leadership students. Were they super impressive, I'm sure?
They were awesome.
Yeah, they were great. And I met with them this morning, and what's super impressive about that group is that I had a little guy who was not feeling school this morning, and they came in to tell me all about what they wanted to share with you today, but then their attention quickly turned to that little guy and trying to help him too. So, that's just another example of how amazing they are, and they're going to do great things for their future too. So, that was a great opportunity for them. But at the elementary school, we are definitely moving ahead with our diagnostic data reviews too. So, we had the iReady diagnostic was done, and our information was sent home to families too. So, we'll use that information to move forward with our interventions and so forth and marking progress for students. Also, our teachers are working on the DESA administration for that middle, that mid-year point too. So, it's a lot of review of that mid-year information and then making decisions and helping kids along the way with that too. Invention convention is tomorrow. Super excited. We might see some of you tomorrow too. Another great opportunity at the elementary school, so we'll see some really innovative projects tomorrow. Thank you.
Thanks, Jac. Go ahead.
Sorry to keep adding on to everybody's reports. We do plan to have a presentation in March on our mid-year data review that we'll do at the curriculum subcommittee, just as we did last year. We'll report out to the full board at our end-of-year data review meeting in June.
Sounds good. All right, that brings us to the report of the superintendent.
I will start with a quick update from our COVID dashboard. So, as of last Friday, we had zero students with positive confirmed cases that we're isolating and only one staff member. We have a total of 159 cases so far to date. That is students and staff across the three buildings, and it's been pretty evenly spread, with 50 cases at the elementary school, 54 at the middle, and 55 at the high school. Any questions about COVID? All right, and now to the fun stuff. I'm going to step up and, and present if you want to rearrange your seats.
I feel like this, I should eat my cheese.
So, I've shared this presentation with some edits a couple of different times now. I had the opportunity to share during the public input sessions to some staff members and community members, and then I was invited down to the LES PTA meeting, was able to share with parents. That was a little bit of a struggle because I had no voice, so I'm hoping today I'll be able to speak a little bit more loud and proud about where we hope to go with our '23, '24 budget. Thank you to all of you for your support in this effort, and I know that we'll have a lot of thoughtful deliberations this evening. So, each year that I work to put together the proposed budget, you know, I want to have certain priorities in mind. Some of these piggyback off of what I feel were worked on last year, in particular, the transparency and trust, trying to have multiple opportunities to share the development. I really think allows people to feel that they're a part of that development and have a clear understanding of where we're going and where we want to head. And the trust too, making sure that I'm working closely with Val, updating information as it becomes available to us so that the figures are in line with what we're asking for and what we need. What we need is the best. I feel that the students and staff, all the families in our community deserve the best possible education. We're going to work hard to make sure that that's done in a fiscally responsible way, but in order for us to strive for excellence, we need to have the best resources, we need to have the best platforms, we need to be able to keep the best teachers. So, something that has changed from last year to this year is the context of this budget. So, I really wanted to focus on being responsive to the current challenges that are out there. Inflation, I hear this all the time about how it's impacting our community members, and I totally agree. I think everyone in this room is feeling that impact, but it's also more expensive to run a school district. Costs, costs across the board are up, and you're going to see that reflected in this proposal. Contractual increases, I dedicated a lot more time in this presentation to where our contract settlements went. Our teachers, our parent educators, our secretaries, our administrators, every employee of the district, our custodians, we had four different settlements that we worked through this year that had a large impact on our overall budget proposed increase, but it was time for those people to get the increases that they got, which connects to this great resignation period. We had, and it's on another slide, roughly 40 positions that we needed to fill this year. And many times when I was talking with those people, they talked about how much they love our community, but they were faced with a very difficult decision as cost of living for them is up too. They looked for other opportunities that paid more than our district. So, back to the contract increases, we, we worked hard to make our district be marketable and competitive. The last thing is we're all in this together. That's something that was a theme that I used at convocation with, with our teachers. It's been referenced throughout the year in presentations, talked about with our students, and as I make this presentation to you all, to the community, to ultimately the Board of Finance, just remind that, you know, we're, we're all in this together in trying to provide the best possible education for our learners. Our mission continues to be the same, and will be directly aligned to what we're asking for in our budget, and our goals as a Board of Ed are also reflected in this presentation. Talked about how we're all in this together, and now jumping into our district goals. So, next year will be the last year of our five-year strategic plan. Since I've been on board, we've worked as a leadership team to really try to attack this strategic plan and manageable chunks and have focus areas during the course of the year. That five-year plan That five-year plan contains a lot and if you try to do it all at once, you're probably not going to make much progress at all. So the past two years, we've really tried to distill that down and pick target areas. This year in academics, we continue to work on personalized learning and effective intervention strategies, climate and culture, really focus on mentoring programs and relationships, community engagement, trying to invite the families in more than we have been able to do in the past, continue to align our professional development and using data like Mrs. Scorsio was just referencing with those check-ins. And then finance and operations, trying to maintain staffing levels to meet the needs of our learners. These are our goals. You know, you're well aware of them. I'm not going to spend too much time here on these and you'll get that mid-year update soon. Jumping into budget input, followed the same process that we did last year. Started at the building level, received requests from teachers, from staff members about what they felt they needed for the next school year. We had leadership meetings to discuss them with building principals, department leaders. We brought that information without making adjustments to the staff and community input sessions. And now we're here to be able to deliberate what we have for increases. This slide takes some explanation. So these percent increases are year-to-year percent increases over what we've asked for, not what we've been given. So that's why these percentages look very low. And if you look specifically at the 1.1% increase from last year, if you remember, it was a 3.92 that we brought to the Board of Finance. But that was really only 1.1% over what we had asked for the year before. But since we don't get what we've asked for or not being fully funded to the extent that we feel we need to be, those wants from the year before become needs the year after and they add to our overall budget increase. So in terms of what we've got over the past five years, it's been an average of a 1.75% request year over year. And here's what we've actually received year over year. Last year was the highest of the past five years thanks to the community support and speaking out and to support what our, what our learners need. And this year with all of those challenges that I talked about in the context of this budget development, you're going to notice that that number's higher. Speaking of being higher, taking the requests from our teachers, from our schools, and just moving them forward, not making any adjustments, that total percent increase was 7.2%, okay? Again, that number, that percentage is high, extremely high compared to our historical requests. But even with that high number, if we were given what we originally asked for last year, it would have been a 3.3%, which sounds much more reasonable. But knowing where we are and trying to be respectful and put together a fiscally responsible budget, we went back and looked at things that we had some flexibility with. But in that initial projection, there was no new initiatives or proposed staffing increases. Kept the current staff, service and programs, just rolled it over with their increases that came with it. And it includes necessary response to some unfunded mandates that weren't there the year before. New reading assessments, phonics instruction requirements, legislation on professional development hours and topics, curricular requirements and diversity mandates, all the way down to a requirement to have mentor products in our schools. What I bring to you today, and we'll discuss how that all came about, is a current projection. I know Mr. Green presented in his notes that we were at a 3.7 not long ago. Since then, we've continued to have negotiations and this is one of those transparency and trust situations. We've had to adjust our projection based on how those things are going. We haven't settled those contracts yet, so that number has the potential to change as well. But to get to that number from the 7.2, some things we had to do. We considered a staff reorganization and a reduction of one teacher in our district. We offered a voluntary early retirement incentive plan that many teachers have taken advantage of. We're planning to move to a change of carrier in our insurance. That $143,000 is already included in that initial projection. That number for our insurance could actually go down. We're capped at a 4.5% increase if we go into this United Healthcare Block program with Brown and Brown, but it could be lower. That's another one of those variables as we work through the budget here. We decided that we are going to cut a bus in the new contract with M&amp;J based on route analysis and usage. And then we've had significant changes in special ed tuition and transportation. And that one, as you all know, is a moving target. Here's a breakdown of the voluntary early retirement incentive plan. So if all of the employees that have announced their retirement were to come back, their salary and benefits, the cost of those employees would have been over $743,000. The VAREUP cost, what we are giving them for an incentive, is $81,000. The retiree savings you see there, we are planning currently to replace each of those employees in terms of their position. So for example, if a fourth grade teacher were to retire, our plan is to hire in a new fourth grade teacher. We're not eliminating any of those positions in the current plan. So the total VAREUP net savings is $119,500. Here's a chart that shows our budget drivers. Three categories, police salaries and benefits, contractual fixed cost services, and transportation. The big blue one, remember room, and the green equate to 96.6% of our budget. So as we talk about areas for cuts or ways that we could reduce the budget, the only way to reduce those is to take teaching positions or staffing positions away or to further possibly cut our busing contracts. Some of these other fixed services, we have to take what we got for oil costs or for other services within our district. So you see these little slivers here, that's the remaining, you know, 3.4% of the budget that we have looked at. We made some tough decisions and moved forward. Here's just another way to look at that. So everything going out that way is an increase over what last year's budget number was. Coming the other way shows a reduction. So the only thing we were able to cut back in any of those bigger driver categories was transportation. You see the staffing, salary, and employee benefits increases, the facility management contract increases, and the utility increases. This is that same information, just laid out in a chart, a little bit easier to look at the overall numbers. Just kind of keeping in mind, roughly a percentage point is about $225,000 that closed out. So you can see how many percentage points that increases. Questions there? So here's some information that we got from Shipman and Goodwin. Actually, it was a part of the negotiation process, but I thought it fit really nicely into the budget. Not going to go over it in too much detail. You'll have copies of this to be able to review, but everybody knows that the labor market has been very challenging to retain, to find employees. And again, that gets into some of the staffing challenges we've had. Inflation, just staggering if you look all the way to the right. You know, it's pretty obvious to see the impact that that has had. And that connects right back to this chart. Everybody who's dealing with inflation, so aren't we. So now this is where I dive into sharing a lot more about staffing settlements and why we were forced to, but also wanted to, move in the direction that we did. 22nd out of 24, 21 out of 24, 16 out of 24. That was the standing of our teachers according to New London County School Districts in our last contract. The administrators, 13th out of 14th, are 10 out of 10. And we're talking about lowest paying positions in New London County. Now, it's interesting though, when you look at the historical settlements, the red is when we were lower than the Connecticut average in this column. The black is when we were above. And we actually have several where we were above. The problem is while we settled a percentage that was higher, it wasn't far above. And because we're so low, we never caught up. So all of these years that we've had settlements and/or contractual increases, we've stayed pretty much in the exact same position, which is close to last in the county. Very similar situation for our administrators. The administrators did take a one-year rollover, receiving a 3.5% this year, which is a little bit above the state average, but again, same type of scenario. Teachers got a 4.86 increase, which again, is above the state average, but that is, got a little bit more weight to it than some of these smaller increases. We have not yet settled with our instructional assistants or secretaries. Our custodians had a 2.5% increase and our unaffiliated group had 3%. Through the contract negotiations, we've had limited legal involvement, which actually saves us money this year, but I thought it was a point worth noting. And we've made some attempts to restructure the contracts so that we are not faced with this situation again where every union is settling within the same year. Some trends on insurance, we've talked about the substantial increase. The reason for our potential carrier change move was because the state partnership plan, which we're currently in, said to conservatively plan for around a 12% increase. So we would be in line to pay triple what we would be paying with this new blocked partnership with Brown and Brown and United Healthcare. There's that savings. Jumping into now some of the district profile stuff, have 111 certified staff, 194 total staff, number of administrators stays the same, and this number of students was from earlier in the school year. Now we're going to jump into some celebrations. This year we're celebrating and honoring the legacy of Lyman, its 100th year anniversary. So while we're celebrating the legacy of George Lyman, we're continuing to create legacies in our district. Something that I wanted to highlight again for you all, which you're well aware of and I look forward to sharing with the community, is how well the Lebanon Public Schools performed on state standardized assessments, which was not the norm for the state. Coming back from the challenges that COVID and online learning presented itself, we really rose to the top. And I think it speaks to that we're all in this together and the collaboration of our staff and the work with our families to really promote excellence and really work hard to have some of these, some of this performance that have come to light. So the blue is us, the red is the state average. So you can see that we are clearly above in all of those tested grades. Continuing to celebrate that success, the ELA on the smarter balance, performance percentage at or above, Lebanon Public Schools above the state average in each category again. This one is presented a little bit differently and it was looking at New London County. So there were only three schools in the entire county who actually saw improvement from pre-COVID to post-COVID. Lebanon Middle School was one of them. And while there were so many that declined and a couple of our other schools did have a slight dip, we were far closer to increasing than the schools on the far end of that graph. Same thing here. So this just gives you a little bit of a snapshot of what that data shows, that in every tested category, we were above the state average in math and English language arts on smarter balance. We showed the signs of learning acceleration measured by academic growth, specifically being first in New London County in all subjects at the middle school in math, science, and ELA. This is just another way to celebrate what we're doing with what we've been given and how we're creatively looking to provide the best programming using grants. So our ASTI grant, which is no across to the district, we were able to purchase equipment for the turf management and landscaping course, which is ongoing. We got a trailer for the turf, or looking to get a trailer for the turf management and landscaping to be able to maneuver vehicles and machines. We were able to provide staffing through this grant, electrical and plumbing for our new barn that is outside, and adding animals as well. Our Perkins Grant, we are looking to outfit equipment for the certified nursing assistant course that we had talked about last year. We were not able to get off the ground. That work is going on as we speak. We were able to get some subscriptions, that's the industry standard for the computer-aided design software, equipment for the intro to manufacturing course, paid for professional development, buses and substitutes. So we are putting these grants to good use. We also use them to outfit our virtual high school courses. And below are some of the things that they're able to take in that environment. Our programs continue to grow as part of the curriculum subcommittee. I know you've been made aware of some of the new courses that we're planning to use next year while increasing our college and university credit earning courses. Next couple of slides just to show you the return on investment from things that we implemented since last year. Here's our turf management course in action with some description from the teacher in that program. And this is a cool video of our students utilizing the drones and our drone piloting program, capturing the build of our new barn outside that we got through our ASTI grant. Some nice aerial shots that they've taken during their coursework. Here's a cute one of our iReady growth celebrations. This is our learners at the elementary school being celebrated as they dive into their diagnostic and work hard to demonstrate growth. We also are working towards earning the seal of Bylitters. Now into enrollment. We're going to look at historically from 2018 to where we currently stand. On the left where the NESDEC projections, on the right is where our actual numbers were. So you see a slight increase here from what NESDEC was projecting in '21, '22, and '23 to actually where we are. So while we have experienced a dip, like most districts in the state of Connecticut, we are starting to trend upward a little bit. A lot of the efforts that have been made throughout our buildings, in particular at the high school, to recruit and to try to put out what our programs can offer to sending schools have really started to pay dividends. You can see that our number of students that were at Norwich Tech and Wyndham Tech have both declined from '21, '22 to '22, '23. We have 13 less students attending those technical schools. And Lebanon, excuse me, students that are attending magnet schools has also decreased. When we look at out-of-town students who are actually coming in, that number has increased dramatically. We've moved from 64 students that were receiving regular education services from out of district to 91. That has a little bit of a breakdown by the sending district. It's exciting not to forget that we have Lisbon coming on board next year, so we hope to see a little bit of an uptick there as well. This is just some data for the class of 2027, for the number of eighth graders who apply to tech schools, out of district, applications for the I program, and regular ed enrollment forms that have been received. And then just letting you know what actually happened this year, some that applied didn't end up going, some that went out came back. And you know, as we've been talking with Mr. Appicelli, Mrs. Singleton, along with Mr. Laskazuski about the collaboration and communication that we're trying to establish between the middle and high school, we hope to see that those numbers for the applications out to the tech schools continue to go down. While we don't argue that that setting is appropriate for some learners, we think that sometimes we undersell what we have here and we want to make sure that we're highlighting what we can provide for them. Here's some more of our ongoing recruitment efforts, which have been shared out through the enrollment subcommittee. Here's the projected enrollment for next year and then you see all the way out through 2027. This is something additionally that if we move forward with a comprehensive, long-term study, we would have more data there as well. One of our philosophies as a Board of Education is that a reasonable class size must be maintained to provide a quality education. Now while we have looked at this dip, I think in the following slide, you're going to see what impact that actually has on individual classes. But as we get ready to look at those numbers, having smaller class sizes than maybe some districts is what I feel strongly makes us who we are. We're able to have a close We're able to have a close-knit community that can develop relationships, meet the social, emotional needs of our learners, and really be able to give them targeted support in our multi-tiered system of supports. So here's the LES enrollment report. Average class size, just over 16. The middle school, just under 16. And these are all by homeroom. And then at the high school, because it does get complicated with where they're moving throughout the day, we looked at enrollment, average class size on required courses for graduation. So you can see we are hovering, you know, right around that 16 number. Data continues to go into all of the different courses. I'm not going to walk you through each and every one of those, but in general, we are in the high teens for all of those courses. Special education services, which you saw in one of the initial slides, is a huge driver in our budget. This gives you an idea of the number of students that we are servicing with IEPs, how many from sending towns that we implement, breaks down our case management numbers, our outplacement numbers, getting into the average cost of outplacement and transportation, you can see is significant. And sometimes that is what is necessary to provide that best education. But we are proud that with the programming we have in district, we're able to keep many of our learners in their schools and keep them with their peers, and also save a lot of money in doing that. Here is just a chart that highlights, a graph that highlights this chart. Getting into revenue, Val has provided me with the current grants that are ending in 2024, and the revenue that comes into the town from those grants. And we broke down our current sending school tuition, what we receive in terms of the rate total from those sending schools, what our VOAG enrollment currently is and the tuition. And here's the number in terms of overall projected tuition revenue is over $1.3 million that we're bringing in. That's all assuming a 2% tuition rate increase, which is something that will be, more than likely be on the next Board of Ed monthly agenda. That's something that we'll need to discuss. Capital request, as Brian shared. Here's just a historical look of what was requested. This is for facilities, what was approved. You can see that we had some years where we asked for a significant amount of money. And in this particular year, we actually got less than the year before when we asked for a significant amount more. That trend, not as significant in IT, but that's something that I've worked with Mr. Dulock to really do an analysis of what our needs are, and that's why you'll see the increase this year. And then athletics follows the same pattern, requesting an amount that's over what we've historically been given. And you can see that there's not much movement there. You know, I would just call to attention that a lot of these projects have not gone away. So now the lists are growing, the requests are becoming higher, and we are falling behind in terms of what is being done in our facilities, our technology, and our athletic programs. With that being said, this is the current capital account request, up substantially from what they have been in years past. But we feel strongly that this is what we need to at least get caught up, and then we can adjust our requests moving forward. So my proposed budget to you for today is a 4.61% increase, taking into account all of those variables and the data that we shared there. That would allow us to keep our current staffing levels, continue to program in a way that we would like to, and has already accounted for a lot of the savings through the cut in a bus, reorganization of staff, the voluntary early retirement incentive, the changes in special ed tuition and transportation, things of that nature that were shared with you in the previous slides. Any questions?
There's a lot to digest, but I do think that now would be an appropriate time if anybody had any questions or wanted some clarification. Rob, Mr. Gonzalez?
I just have, back to the special ed proposal. I'm not sure exactly what the amount that we're asking for our special ed department, could it be possible to train some of our teachers to do, to get dyslexics trained so that they can help the needs of our students? Because I don't think a lot of teachers in the district are trained.
I can try to give you information on the number of teachers who have that type of specific training, and I can also consult with Dawn to see if there are any plans in the works.
Yeah, there should be at least one in each building. That would be great to know.
Any questions? If you have anything they're wondering, curious about, thoughts? Because I think the plan is, you know, we take time to digest the proposal, contemplate questions that we might have individually, bring those back to what I'm envisioning as a special meeting next week. Because we need to have an approved budget for the 28th going into the Board of Finance. So, and we'll talk about a date for the special meeting next week later on. But if anybody has any thoughts or clarification, questions, that would be a great time. I mean, of course, Mr. Gonzalez is always, you know, available for your individual questions, but, you know, via email, if you're thinking about something and you want to have him clarify next week, that would be fine. Do you have something, Bruce?
Will this special meeting be open to the public?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
I feel very comfortable with a 4.6. I have to be honest, I was a little nervous with the 3.7 because I thought that was way under. And then hearing that all the surrounding towns are into the fives, I feel very comfortable with 4.6, and I would even be comfortable going higher, just based on all of the costs going up everywhere. It's just making me nervous, so.
Go ahead.
Again, just in full transparency, that list that comes out from the Connecticut Association of School Business Offices has grown, and there's a lot of data in terms of what other districts are doing. So there are some that are lower than what we're projecting. And while I find that information to be valuable, to have a ballpark of what's happening, all of our focus was on what we need here. And, you know, that, we don't look to the other districts to say, oh, they're high, we're going to go high, or they're low, we're going to go low. We really present a needs-based budget year to year, and that will be the case as long as I'm in.
And I think the key word is excellence, Andy, as you said. You want our schools to be excellent, so we need to pay for that.
Brian?
I think, you know, the 4.6, I agree, is probably, negotiations has worked hard, the superintendent's worked hard to, you know, on all these contracts that have renewed. There's really no new program, so to speak, other than what is mandated. And so in order to keep what we have, I think it's important to at least fund that. I think we're, while that will certainly bring some challenge, we're going to have likely more of a challenge when it comes to the, particularly, you know, the facilities requests. But I think all of them are going to be challenging. But with all, you know, where we ended with all of those was trying to just get caught up. And it was really the idea, but we, I mean, we all know what tight spots folks are in because we're all feeling that too. But we've got to reinvest, or at least get our physical plants back up to where they need to be. Otherwise, they're going to be crumbling around us, and then it's going to cost us more because it's going to be emergent. Thanks.
Thank you.
So, I agree with everything that everyone just said. And I think all of our committees have done a lot of work, from facilities to everybody has done work to try to help this budget and to help, you know, our district. I would appreciate the time to take, to digest it. We have negotiations tomorrow. It might be a little wiggle room, not a lot, but it's still wiggle room. So it would just be a little bit, I would feel better about having a special meeting to digest and make a more educated, confident decision instead of just having to vote tonight.
Okay. Do you agree, John?
Yeah, totally agree. We still have two negotiations outstanding in mind. We actually don't know, I mean, the speculation we can come to play with better work.
Any other thoughts?
I agree.
Okay, great. And again, in the meantime, if we have any questions, any concerns or thoughts, bring them, and we'll have an opportunity for discussion at the special meeting next week. We'll take a look at our calendars at the end of the meeting, if that works for everybody here, so we can get as many board members there as possible. Scheduling is tricky, especially when it's within a week, so. All right, we'll move on to the finance report.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, now we go back to this year. You're going to be out of next year, come back to this year. Welcome to any questions about the very detailed financial report. We seem to be again in, right on target for our five-year historical comparisons in our spending. We have done some grant drawdowns. That's what that talks about, the grant payments. So what happens in terms of logistics is we pay our grant-funded people out of the Board of Ed and have to do grant drawdowns to relieve that expense. So we've done like our first quarter of grant drawdowns, so that's reflected in here. Not much else is really, you know, obviously, we have our special ed situations going on with tuition and transportations, with the overages there. We should be expecting our first excess cost payment by the end of February, most likely to be reflected in next month's financials. And what that is, is the state reimburses us for a portion of the excess cost of any outplaced student over $90,000. So our high-dollar students who are outplaced, anybody over $90,000, we receive 70 to 73% of that reimbursement. So if a student was $91,000, we would receive 70 to 73% of the $1,000. So we do, Dawn and I do quarterly filings with the state to keep them updated on our expenses, and so we'll be expecting our first payment towards that, hopefully by the end of February, which will help this budget.
Now, while you're talking about that, Val, can you speak to, a question has been asked of the board, or it's been brought up to the Board of Finance that there's going to be a change in formula for how much we're going to be receiving.
We pray there is.
What is the, so it will be a positive impact to us, or it will be a negative?
It would be a positive to us. Not every district, though. It would, their first-
It's important for everybody to understand this.
Right, it's not every district.
But afraid is it's going to impact us negatively.
So, what will negative, what will impact the town negatively is our ECS funding, our education cost sharing. That's the $4.5 million that the town gets for all the students in the district. That calculation is based on like eight different components of the town, student count, town wealth, per capita amounts, all sorts of different information. Lebanon has been pegged, the education cost sharing is, they're calling it a phase in. Over the next 20 years, they plan to phase in this new formula. Lebanon has been pegged in that situation to phase out, and we will be reduced. There's so much talk in the legislation right now about fixing the formula because it doesn't properly fund anybody. I'm getting emails because the legislation is meeting almost nightly at this point about what they're trying to change and how they plan to change it. We are, the town as a whole, next year for the '23, '24 budget is projected to be reduced by $200,000 roughly from the $4.5 million. So it'll be like $4.2 million without me looking up exact numbers. Unfortunately, there's almost absolutely nothing any of us can do for that dollar amount, except for student count. We can bring in more students, but we can have more families in Lebanon. That's really the only portion of it we can control. The state has their calculation, and they've been funding it like this for years. But Lebanon is, and maybe that's why I went off on that tangent, is that that is what's planned to reduce.
Negatively, and then the other, and then the excess-
On excess cost, which is the special ed overage of excess cost of special ed students, our town threshold is $90,000. Our percentage is due to increase like 3%. So we'll get more of a reimbursement for students who cost us more than $90,000. That, again, is still in discussion. We just got something today about that that I need to kind of read over and digest. Because again, they're changing formulas and, you know, the state is really trying to get on top of proper funding for these, for these programs.
We actually had a area superintendent meeting yesterday in which state representatives zoomed in to join us to kind of further introduce themselves and ask what we needed from them or to offer support and to kind of try to take our voice back to the legislative level. And much of what was discussed was that type of funding.
Go ahead, Brian.
So, Val, what's the net offset? If I'm doing a quick math, just in my-
So the education cost sharing goes to the town. It's always town revenue, always be. The excess cost comes back to our budget to offset our expenses.
Ultimately, because we take the lion's share of the town budget.
Right.
It's still obvious.
Yeah, from the greater good, it's all for the, you know, same-
I mean, like I said, my quick math is telling me that likely the ECS funding will have, what we could make up for in the excess-
Is not going to be, no.
Where the ECS funding is going.
No.
Okay.
No, that 3%, you know, look at the 225 in the budget, it would be, that's assuming the same kids stay in place. But yeah, you're correct to assume that we won't cover that difference. I will say, though, we could potentially next year cover that difference in revenue.
Right.
We protected a 2%, if we approve a 2% increase on our regular tuition, we have more students than we've ever had coming in. Assume everybody stays put and never moves again, right? Because that's the one thing about those budgets. But we have more special ed students getting services that we're billing for. And so on the VOAG tuition, for everyone's understanding, the tuition is set by the state. So we can't, we can't set that rate, but we have more VOAG students, then we have more revenue coming in. So. It's all about kid count, right?
Kid count, yep.
Thank you for that explanation, Val, that was helpful.
No problem. It's way more complicated than I said.
Well, but it gives us a good idea because that is an argument that's all, that's been, you know, within the Board of Finance conversation-
Right.
-a couple of years. And that's not something that we have to budget for because, like you said, just like all of our revenue, we don't see that.
Yeah, it goes to the town, right, the town.
Directly, we don't directly see it, it just immediately goes there. So it's not something we have to take into account when creating that.
Right, correct. Any other, any questions about operating? Yep?
Go ahead, Brian.
One.
Go ahead.
So, line 420, M&amp;R for equipment.
Sorry, I'm scrolling.
Currently, we've got an amount remaining of $38,000 and change, or about 70, almost 75% of budget.
Divided between the three schools.
Right. So, is there anything on that, Andy, that, or what the plans are for that? Is there any, anything on our, you know, on our capital list? Everything from door hardware to whatever, the plans on, you know, getting that down? Because we're now six- hardware to whatever, the plans on, you know, getting that down? Because we're now six-ish, seven months in. Can we still have about 74% of that particular line item remaining?
Yeah, off the top of my head, I don't have any.
It wasn't, yeah.
Yeah, I can consult with Mr. French and see what the plans are.
More rhetorical, just-
Any other questions for Val?
We have not much going on facilities tracking. I'll just go briefly through. We've recorded the payment that was sent for Lyman painting, which was, which was complete. We've had no changes in athletics capital or technology capital. I know I usually do my little plug for food service. We heard this week that the state has approved free lunches for the rest of the year. So I won't have to update you on a monthly basis anymore.
I did a question about that. What happens to the money? Sorry, sorry.
No, I'm just being-
You know, we don't have to spend it?
Yeah, so we do. It's a non-for-profit program. We are not supposed to sit on any more than three and a half months our operating. Because of the very generous federal reimbursements for the COVID meals, we have had to write corrective action programs for two years in a row now to spend the money. We did a new dishwasher at the elementary school. This year, our plan was to fund the paid and reduced lunches, the portion, to supplement that. We are back to the drawing board.
Are there equipment needs?
There's equipment needs. So Carlos, our food service director, and his regional manager and I are going to be back to the drawing board to start updating the kitchens, making sure that things that are not working so well can be replaced now. I wonder what the state will do to maybe even open up some of the guidelines on, you know, how we use it. But I think that Carlos and Bobby can, we can definitely work with a plan on how to utilize the surplus. We hadn't started really even tipping the surplus because we had the smart funds through half of December. We also don't know when this takes effect.
So new, it just-
Yeah, it just happened. I don't know if they're going to retro it, I don't know if they're going to start March 1st. I'm not sure how they're logistically going to handle it.
I didn't mean to put you on the-
Oh, no, no, it's, like, all week, we've been like, what's going to happen? How are we going to do this? But I was, I'm just happy to say, and I'm, we'll be happy to share that information, because it's really helped with participation. Our participation has skyrocketed. Other districts that went back to paid lunches found that they lost a lot of participation. So we'll have to be prepared for that if and when we, you know, when we get back to paid lunches. But there's formulas to calculate that, and there's all sorts of spreadsheets that we've been working on. So, but the kids are fed, and they'll be fed through the rest of the year.
I just hope that with inflation and everything else, that they do update the tables, because there's going to be kids that do fall off of these lunches that still need lunch.
Right.
You know, because of the economy and whatever else. So I hope the feds and the state do their due diligence.
Yeah, because the tables-
Free or reduced lunch.
Right, yeah. And that will be our biggest effort, it's always our biggest effort, to make sure that at least everybody fills out an application, so it can go up for review to start gaining, you know, as much support for those families as we can.
Thank you, Val. Any other questions?
No problem.
All right, thanks a lot.
No problem.
All right, we have some new business, like Maureen mentioned, we have a lot of first readings. Take a peek at those policies if you haven't already. Some of them are deletion, like Maureen said, and some are up for adoption. Okay, any questions on those?
I think they're pretty well covered in our minutes on what we discussed on them. I like to make them more comprehensive so people don't have to ask questions.
Thanks, Ma. All right, moving on to our action items.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the letters of comment with regret.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Nicole. Any discussion? I feel like this is a big one, and the teachers that have, that are retiring, you know, not to put, not to slight any other time we accept a letter of retirement, but particularly-
There's a lot of years of service in there.
I'm so grateful, and the community just is very grateful for all of the years of service, commitment, dedication. Danell.
I was just going to reiterate that with great thanks, because the staff that are retiring have been here so long. And I know that my kids have benefited from all of them, and I wish them well in their retirement.
A long and happy retirement.
Mm-hmm. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes unanimously. I will take a motion for our action items two and three, if we so choose.
I will make that motion, that we accept the number two, and that the policy on video studio facilities be deleted.
Second, motion by Maureen, seconded by Nicole. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes unanimously. Action item number four, approval of the '22, '23, '24 capital budget.
I'd make a motion that we approve the 2023-2024 capital budget.
Second. Motion by Brian, seconded by Nicole. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes unanimously. Action item number five.
Motion to approve the 2023-24 operating budget.
Motion by Nicole. Is there a second? No second on that, so that does not, we will not take any action on that this evening, and we will move into a special meeting next week. Action item number six. Can we have a little bit of background on, we're going to need a little bit of background on, actually, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13.
Yeah, Mr. French and Mr. Dulac, if you would not mind kind of coming up so that you could help support me as I explain to the board. So, being in line with the policy for the non-lapsing account, we do have some emergency situations that we need to take care of. We also have some items that have been on the capital list for some time that we feel need to be taken care of. So the first ones here, the replacement water heater and the emergency replacement of the heat recovery wheel, as well as the emergency repair of the masonry blocking. So we're talking about items number six, seven, and eight are things that have either broken, or, in particular, the masonry work was flagged by our town building inspector as needing repair as soon as possible. So that's why those are here for your review and asking to be acted on.
Would the Lyman one be in the back of Lyman? That, those-
It's a different corner of the building, different pieces of concrete, masonry block, that are loose.
But there's one in the back, right?
There's some in the back, and there's some-
That's what Jason was telling me.
Right, there's one by the loading dock over here, too.
I'm just curious when that inspection takes place. Is it every year that the building inspector comes around? Was this done in August, or when was this done?
So this was not done during a typical inspection. This was just something that came to his attention, that he came and looked at and felt that it was a priority need to get done.
Can I just ask a question about when these projects will be getting done? So we'll approve it tonight. Do we have a-
Depending on what we do, there was three different things with the water heater, three different water heaters. Some are six weeks out. I chose a state water heater in the amount of $29,168 because it was the least expensive, and it's the least amount of lead time.
What's the lead time?
I'm hearing it could be a few weeks, the aim were from three to six weeks.
Three to six weeks.
The one that's in, the PVI unit that's there is six to eight weeks.
You know why I'm asking, right?
Well, I had three different vendors come out and actually walk it.
Right, but, you know, I mean, I'm only asking just to make sure that the quotes are going to remain accurate, based on the-
They're saying five days here. I'm going to call tomorrow. After it's approved, I'll call, and I'll get, I'll get with Andy and let him know how I make out.
All right, so do you need a motion for that one? Sure do. Any other questions?
Well, on the, so down that, going down that same road, when do we plan then on having the heat recovery replaced, and then the block work?
The heat recovery is actually something that's in stock, I can get that done immediately.
Okay, great.
The block work's done weather permitting. When the weather's been fine, I don't see the weather changing. I'm sure we can get it done immediately.
Okay.
Like, when you say immediately, you mean this year, right?
I mean, within a week or so.
Yeah. Or else that's going to have to be all coned off.
Right.
That's what I was told.
Right.
Any other questions on those three?
Could we act on three of them at once?
Can we?
I know we had talked about making sure that the dollar amounts are specific in all of those.
And where the money comes from.
Yeah, so I can do that.
Just do them separately.
Okay, you can do them separately.
I think to make it clean, we can just do them separately.
All right, is there a motion?
Sarah, I'd like to make a motion to act on the emergency replacement of the water heater at the elementary school, utilizing non-lapsing funds in the amount of $29,168.
Second. Oh, motion by Brian, seconded by Danell. Any further discussion?
Should we have said not spending more than that, or should we have-
Up to, you can say up to.
Up to, up to?
Yep.
I'll amend my motion by saying up to $29,168.
Will you second it?
I'll second that as well.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by Danell. Any further discussion? Bless you. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, and that passes unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion to act on the emergency replacement of the heat recovery wheel at the Lebanon Middle School on roofing unit number one. Again, utilizing the non-lapsing funds in the amount of $2,9673.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Brian, seconded by Maureen. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion for item number eight, to act on the emergency repair of the Lyman masonry blocking, utilizing, again, non-lapsing account for amounts up to $4,000.
Second. Motion by Brian, seconded by Nicole. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes unanimously. All right, now, that brings us to action item number nine, about a network infrastructure. Number 10, a student refresh.
11 and 12.
Oh, okay. Yep, 10, 11, and 12 are student refresh. All right, would you like to speak on that, Jac?
Sure. I just want to first bring up the fact that the only reason I'm making these requests is, as Brian had mentioned, my capital has not been funded to what we'd like it to be. So some of these, three out of these four items are things that have fallen by the wayside because we just haven't had the money to do a complete refresh as planned. And so I wanted to bring that up. The only one that isn't is the number nine, which is extending our Wi-Fi infrastructure to the soccer field, baseball fields, and whatnot. And that's just come to light with the press box, with the internet, with possibly live streaming games, updating scores, and also adding security cameras, which would piggyback off the Wi-Fi infrastructure out in the fields. Without that, we'd be spending more on the cameras to get signal, to provide the feed from those cameras.
That's correct.
If I could just add, there's a safety and security element to that, for sure. While we want to have improved signal and be able to broadcast these exciting events, we currently have no way to address possible vandalism. Unfortunately, there have been spectator events. We have no way to try to go back and look through those and document what took place. So this would also, in addition to enhancing our spectator experience, it would also upgrade our safety and security of our fields.
I do want to mention that this number is very low because of the fact that we had the windmill out there, and we've already run the fiber optics to those, to those fields. And that is actually bringing the cost down about a third. It would have been more around $30,000 if we hadn't run that. So we can thank the windmill for one thing in this light.
Great. Any other questions?
Do you want me to go on to 10, and 11, and 12?
Let's do this one, because it seems a little bit different than the other three.
So I'll make a motion to act on number nine, capital expenditure for the network infrastructure upgrade, again, using non-lapsing funds for extending the Wi-Fi out in the fields in an amount up to $10,000.
Second, motion by Brian, seconded by Nicole. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes unanimously. So go ahead.
Just a point for the board, as a reminder to what Brian said earlier, things that are on here that are possibly being approved, Val and I will go right to work tomorrow to make adjustments to capital requests. And I know Jacques and Kevin will get working on, you know, trying to get these projects done as soon as possible.
Thank you. Maureen?
I have a question as to why there's three. Is that one for each school?
He's going to tell us right now.
Yeah, that's completely different projects.
Oh, I'm talking about the student refresh. There's three of them.
They're all completely different projects.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So number 10 is, we have currently about 70 Chromebooks that are no longer being upgraded, security patches, and will eventually not work with testing. So I'm asking to move some money from the non-lapsing over to my capital, so that I can replace those 70 Chromebooks and get to where they're all being updated back in line. And that's, again, Brian had mentioned, I appreciate it, that we, we've been getting this $90,000 every year, and that was even before we went to the one-to-one program. So it's very hard with that $90,000 for me to keep these kids with a Chromebook or iPad for K through first.
Motion to approve the capital expenditure for student refresh, utilizing the non-lapsing account for an amount of up to $17,500. Chromebook, Chromebooks.
Motion by Nicole, seconded by John. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes unanimously. Action item number 11.
I'm starting to feel like I have a broken record, but this is another thing that has fallen off the wayside. It's a lab that we have at the middle school that hasn't been upgraded since before I was here. So I'm, I don't know exactly, but I'm thinking 10 to 12 years those computers have not been replaced in that lab. We would actually be moving over to Chromeboxes. And I talked to the tech teacher, technology teacher there, and he's all with, in favor of going to Chromeboxes, which the kids are very used to. But it's more to upgrade the lab and bring it up to these days.
Danell, did you have a question?
I have a question about the non-lapsing account in general.
Okay, go ahead.
What's the total amount we have in there right now? Okay, it's a lot higher than this. I just did a quick-
Yeah, it's 300.
Hold on, how much is left in the checkbook?
Can I?
Yep.
So it's a great question, Danell, and that's something that we talked about during the finance subcommittee meeting, that we, I, we felt it was important to leave about half in there. Again, we haven't utilized any, and that's a problem, so we need to get caught up a little bit. But I- But I, I and we felt that we should leave about half in there in case we do have something that drops and we do have another emergency that falls from the sky. So it was important we left about half, but it was a great question.
$330.
Okay, plenty for now.
Motion to approve the refresh utilizing non-lapsing account for an amount of up to $22,000 to, to upgrade the lab at LMS.
I'll second that.
Motion by Nicole, seconded by Maureen. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes unanimously. All right, action item number 12.
And number 12 is another lab that I was able to upgrade some of it, but not all of it with the money that I've been given from the town capital. So I would like to try to get that lab up to date. It just happens it is drone, it holds a drone program, but it also is a math class who uses the bigger programs that require an actual computer instead of a Chromebook. So the classes require software that is starting to not be able to run on the 12 computers that we have not replaced yet.
Any questions?
That is at the high school here.
So just, just one, Jacques, is all this, so given the fact that this last one is likely to be approved, how long do you think it would take to get the equipment and actually get the stuff upgraded?
Not that long, actually. I'd say in about a month we'd have this all going. We have our images that we can, my tech can use to upgrade them or to put in the machines. So it isn't going to be that long.
Thanks.
Motion to approve a student refresh at Lyman utilizing the non-lapsing account for an amount of up to $14,400.
I'll second that.
Motion by Nicole, seconded by Maureen. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that also passes unanimously. It brings us to action number 13. Act on the capital expenditure for safety and security camera.
Yeah, so we still have some work to do specifically in parking lots. There unfortunately during the course of the year have been events that have taken place that we were not able to pull footage that would have been helpful in identifying what actually took place. There's some recommendations to get cameras in the serving lines of our cafeteria where there also have been some issues. There's some blind spots within our schools. So all in all, we've made great strides with our cameras, but we still have vulnerabilities. And with safety and security being top of mind, we, we feel it's time to get these done.
All three buildings, Andy, or just two?
Two.
Two of the three.
Not Elias?
Right. Just two out of our three buildings.
Well, there's still, there will still be some money left over, probably a third of it. We're doing the cameras in the cul-de-sac at this school, the press box area, the baseball field, the driveways, the parking lots in the middle school and the high school, and a camera towards the gym at the middle school. So that totals $19,000 and change. But we still need to, Jacques' point, we still need to add cameras in the soccer fields and so on and so forth.
I just have a question about the language of it. It says camera upgrade. To me, that means we're improving the camera, but we're actually adding cameras, right?
Yes, we'd be adding those cameras, yeah. There are no cameras out there now.
Okay.
Adding cameras.
I think the way we looked at it was it's an upgrade towards existing...
Yeah, system, yeah.
Any other questions? Brian?
So question on, and I just happened to think about it, but with adding the cameras and additional infrastructure, will our system, can our system take the additional, all the video footage, the cameras, the...
We're adding equipment. You have to handle that, right?
It's not just the cameras.
Well, routers and whatnot.
Yeah, yeah.
The system can, can hold up bandwidth from those cameras. Good question though.
Motion to approve the addition of cameras to upgrade our security system utilizing the non-lapsing account for up to $30,000.
Second.
Great job. Motion by Nicole, seconded by Brian. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Now, items for next agenda. Can we all take out our calendars, please? Just nail down a date for our special meeting. As many board members as can be there would be fantastic.
Take out your calendars.
So you're okay with meeting on the days that are not, schools not in session?
I am. I wouldn't recommend the Monday, but I happen to be free the 22nd and the 23rd. I don't know if anybody else...
I can do either the 22nd or the 23rd.
I'd like to stay away from the 23rd.
What day of the week is it?
Wednesday. Wednesday's the 22nd.
Is it the fourth Wednesday?
I can do the Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Is it the fourth Wednesday?
That's Ash Wednesday. Yes, it is.
It's the fourth Wednesday. I can't be here.
You can't be here Wednesday?
Not the fourth Wednesday.
I can do the 21st too.
And also do the 20th since it's President's Day.
I can do the 20th as well.
I can do the 20th in the afternoon.
I prefer to stay away from the 20th just because...
I can do the 21st as well. I can make all week work, guys, so just do what you need to do.
I'd feel more comfortable if we do it when the schools are open.
If we do it the 23rd, then we have to do it like early because I can't do it at 7:00.
How about you, Denell?
I'm open except for Monday.
So I'm hearing it's either the 22nd or the 23rd early.
Well, the 22nd, we have negotiations at 4:15, so we could do that after.
We can do 6:00 on the 20...
I would probably, we could even do like 5:30.
5:30 on the 22nd?
I should be able to make 5:30.
Don?
Yep.
5:30, the 22nd. Thank you, everybody, appreciate that flexibility.
Is the only thing going to be the budget?
Should be.
I'm just asking.
Val, how's your hand up?
Be the only agenda item or do we have another agenda item? Potentially. We'll, we'll get back to you on that.
I want to say as items, we should probably put capital on there again. I know that you guys just approved it, but now it's all going to change based on what was approved on the budget.
Okay.
So we'll just do one more last minute digital on capital too.
Sounds good, thank you.
So 5:30 on that day?
Yes.
At Lyman?
At, here, yes. Does that work, Andy?
We should ask Jacques if he can make it.
All right, thank you very much. And don't forget to take a close look at the budget. Everybody has a budget book?
Yes, budget book was given to us.
Yes, okay.
Sarah, for the, our next regular meeting, one of the things I'd like to, I mean, it'll come up on, likely under facilities and finance anyway, but for the whole board, I'd like to, an update on the lapsing funds, the non-lapsing funds that we spent tonight and what the status is on those.
Okay, non-lapsing projects. And, and remaining funds?
Well, or just the status of what we allocated to spend for the non-lapsing.
Nicole?
Okay, speaking, this is for the next Board of Ed meeting. Speaking about the 100th celebration of Lyman, the committee is still in possession of about $5,000 and they would like to create a book that has stories of the past and also pictures. And they would like to publish this book. They would like to publish about 250 copies. They have different options, like either it's all black and white or a combination of black and white color or all color. But the cost to publish 250 copies is going to be almost $7,000 and they are $5,000. So I'd like to discuss on maybe we can help with the remaining costs if possible to publish this book because I for one would love a copy of all those stories of Lyman. And I think a lot of people in the community would like it too.
Any other items for the agenda?
I don't have an item, but I do have clarification. So the budget book that we're continuing to look at is, was sent on February 6th. That's the, that's the one I have. I just want to make sure I'm looking at...
Is that the, is it the...
February 6th. Okay, thanks. All of a sudden, I'm looking at an old version.
All right, well, thank you very much, everybody. We will adjourn at 6:01. Have a great Valentine's dinner, I hope, or spectating boys basket open.